I think we got it.
We're gonna get there though.
Don't worry anymore.
Have a good slide.
Bye.
Bye.
I'm hoping that you'll back me up when you need for real. Because of me, I'm still having.
Down. Still says, next biggest problem. This is still not populated, so I can't get it locked down here.
Oh.
The old version.
I have.
Yeah, I don't have.
I gave it.
Or wait, isn't it an email?
She's not gonna be here today, or we could've talked about it. Yeah.
She's not even thinking about this one today.
We now have a contract with Spin and Vio, two of our mobility companies. And the contract really gives us the ability to enforce things. That's really probably the biggest key difference. And on the screen right now is kind of the grading rubric, if you will, our service level agreements. There's 28 of them. I just have a handful at the top to showcase as an example. But essentially, this is my report card that I'm using to assess how well companies are doing, how things I think can improve upon. And then on the right is a picture of really kind of where we'd like to be. This is a former COGO station, our bike share. We've replaced them with these lighter weight stations called ride hubs. Wouldn't we have asked the companies to stay in these areas? It keeps them, there are already dedicated spaces for this type of mobility. It keeps them out of the ride away, keeps them in a dedicated space. And then also, the SLA report card, the service level report card on the left, we've just recently completed our 90-day review for these companies. And it really is a synthesis of how well they're doing. And basically, over the next 90 days, which will be our six-month review, things that they need to improve upon. So it was a good, it was a good exercise to go through with them, where they're falling short and things that they can improve upon.
I have a question for Janay. Is it possible you can read off just a couple of the companies you have in the chart for those that can't see your presentation?
Yeah, so the, so our top service level agreement is ADA obstruction response. That's pretty much, that's one of the top three things we asked when we solicited for, for these companies to respond. So the first three are related to basically obstruction. So I'll also stick to the first one. The agreement is that basically, it's for 3-1-1s. If a 3-1-1 is submitted, they have a, an hour to respond and pick up a device if it's obstructing ADA. The other one's about a travel and bike lane and then other parking infractions on private property, for example. And then the next one is about device tip over. The threshold is 90% of their devices need to be upright at all times. And they actually are doing fairly well at this through personal audits, city staff audits. We were seeing about 95% of those are being up, are upright.
Thank you for reading it. Appreciate it.
Sure thing.
May I speak too? This is Tricia Kovak speaking. And we heard you tell us about that. You have to, if we turn in a 3-1-1, it'll be resolved within an hour. So I happen to be down around campus area. I submitted 3-3-1-1s that I saw. In fact, I saw 10, but only submitted three of them. But I didn't see any kind of response. So is that something that's done behind the scenes? That the 3-1-1 will get updated, but we don't get those notifications we sometimes get?
So the, the metric that we're using is one hour. Now, it's not always met. If it's blocking an ADA, so, but for example, when you submit a 3-1-1, it's getting sent directly to the vendor. So they're notified of it. And if there's a picture attached and they know that it's blocking ADA, their goal is to clean it up within an hour. Now, we take it over a 30-month period. And that kind of gives us, did they pass or did they fail? And they're, they're roughly about 90 minutes, both companies. So there's still room for improvement. But I think one of the biggest changes from the past is that it's going directly to them, so their field team can, can react to it quickly.
Yeah, thank you. And that's a good idea. I'm glad to do that.
I have another question, this is Janay, one of the commissioners. So if an individual is blind, a vision impaired, and they're walking, they encounter a scooter that's kind of in the middle, but they can't provide a picture, what would be the best information you would like them to provide if 3-1-1, if they call? I get a lot of concern from members of a chapter that I'm president of.
Yeah, so, so a picture is certainly not required. If you were to call in, essentially, if you have an address or any, any sort of geospatial reference that you can, just blocking sidewalk, keep it simple. They're gonna read that, because they get the text and the picture of whatever is reported. And they will, if they see blocking sidewalk, they're gonna make that, that property. And then effectively, they told me when they get these, they're pretty much dropping what they're doing to go deal with the issue.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you so much.
Yep. Yep, go ahead.
I'm Bob, reading one of the commissioners. I'm having a linguistic problem, because until this meeting, the word "mobility device," in my mind, referred to something like a wheelchair. And suddenly, in this meeting, we're using the word "mobility device" to refer to what I would call a scooter. Then they added the confusion. 20 years ago, the word scooter was used by elderly people in grocery stores and weren't these two-wheel vehicles that we're now talking about? And I'm just aware that English has changed, or maybe this meeting has changed English.
I don't know if this, this meeting has changed English. But I will say, because the fleet has changed from just scooters to bikes and scooters, sit-down scooters, we, we, I agree that the nomenclature can be a little confusing. Shared mobility is kind of what we settled on. Shared mobility devices, that's kind of what the industry has decided upon as well. I do think all of the other devices you, you mentioned would also be considered mobility devices, for sure. But so, do apologize for that confusion. But in our context, I think shared is the thing that separates it, because it is, anyone can use these devices is probably the biggest, just distinguish.
Eric Dussey. I have a question. So can we call the 3-1-1 center at any time to report an issue with these devices?
Yes, you can.
I, I, I can as well, the, say your name.
This is Pedro, the 3-1-1 call center. You can only speak to somebody Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 7:00, if you're calling specifically. They accept 24 hours a day service requests through the mobile app, which is called Sebus 3-1-1. Or you can email 311@columbus.co. Just wanted to clarify, in case your question was specifically about calling in. Some providers allow you to call specifically 3-1-1 and hit dial, but most times, you'll have to enter 614-645-3111. And I also had a follow-up from Tricia's, Tricia's question, which is, do we know currently how customers are being notified about, I think you mentioned the result of their service request being entered? So you noted that you didn't get any notice that it had been resolved. This is something that we deal with at 3-1-1 a lot, which is service requests getting closed out without a lot of detail to the resident, which causes some frustration. So I don't know if you can speak to what the customer's getting right now, or if that's something that I can help look into, so that even if it's just the ticket being closed, that the resident knows something has been done about it. Thank you. Yeah, that, that aspect is definitely work in progress with these vendors. They've recently started, they're trying to send closed pictures. It is a manual process that they're trying through. I do think a partnership between us and 3-1-1 is, is probably a good idea. They're just trying to get a handle on the volume. First and foremost, dealing with the issue as quickly as possible. I do, I do agree that phone communication to the resident is needed. And that's something that we did address in our 90-day review just recently. And I will continue. So to your, your, on our screen, we have one question from, from the online. Well, we have a comment and a question. Okay. This is Zane, speaking on behalf of others. Karina Hyde says that micro, micro-mobility devices are another recognizable term for these type of vehicles. So she's just offering that to the group. And then Chad Rittenhour says, given the likelihood that majority of ADA violations are probably not reported to 3-1-1, how are the companies proactively reviewing their own users' end-of-ride pictures to self-manage proper parking compliance and fix them without a 3-1-1 report? So that's something that was also addressed in our 90-day review on how best. That is another manual process. So they're working through how they can work through that from an operational perspective. But that's kind of our broader enforcement level goals onto users via the companies and then also through us. So to answer your question, very much a work in progress, something we do want more demonstration on, and then also reporting of that as well.
Can I, can I ask another follow-up question? Sorry. This is Tricia again. So I haven't been at the new kind of scooters. I've only been at one once, a bike and a scooter, the old ones. But now that, when they dock them, are they still required? They take a photo when they dock, when they're done? I know they don't dock them anymore, but take a photo when they leave? Because that was something I remember I had to do.
Yeah, a, a photo is still required. And I don't think I'm gonna talk about it too much in this presentation, but they are working on integrating AI technology to be able to. So for example, the, the image on the screen, if you were to, if one of those rides were ended in a future iteration of how they would like end-ride photos to work, is that it would capture the ADA ramp. That's in the, that's in the image. And then it would say you were not able to end your ride here because of the proximity to this ramp, for example. And in, in this images, so these are two images that I took over the last several months. One to the left is a clear violation of blocking sidewalk. And then the other one is, I think, kind of proof that these devices need space, dedicated space to park. This is an auto. This is a car parking space on the right. And there's, there's four sit-down scooters that were, that's where the rides ended. And in our perspective, that is, that is good parking. But it's clear to us that we just need to dedicate some space for these devices. And that's kind of, I think, really the rest of my presentation. It's kind of where, where we're headed, where, where some things that we have moving forward. So on our screen, there's two images here. One on the left is kind of just a high-level heat map of where are, like where is the scooter activity? Or where is the shared mobility activity happening? And really, it's dressed up all along the High Street corridor. We obviously have a lot of different blockings of activity. And really, these are, what's populating these are the little dots on the right, which is just a zoom in of Buddles and High Street in our Short North area. But if you were to zoom in, that's what, that's what the heat map is basically representing, our trips ending. So this is, this is often his plan, telling us focus, well, where is the demand? If, if there's a lot of demand, you can assume there's a lot of parking events. And not all of those parking events, as we know, are in the ideal spot. So if you want to go to the next one. So this is, on the left here, this is just kind of a screenshot of one of our work orders at Russell and High Street in the Short North. And we're, it may be hard to see on, on screen for folks in the room, but basically, we're gonna be below the curb, these little scooter corrals, if you will, which is represented on the right. This is gonna be our first kind of corridor-level parking management strategy. There's gonna be basically one at each corner. And I am thankful to say that we are taking no vehicular parking. It's all below the curb in a, in a space that you can't legally park a car, but you can legally park a scooter. So it also will help daylight the intersection a little bit, we're hoping, drawing more attention to, to other activity that may be going on. And the image on the right is a scooter corral on Nationwide. We currently have 20 that are out there. And the Short North project will double that, dedicating space for these devices to be ended and essentially not, not blocking ADA and, and really just out of, out of the way. And we're, we're really excited for this project. It should be finished, complete by this fall.
I have a question.
Yep.
Hi, my name is Justin Simmons. I'm one of the commissioners here. I guess my question is, who owns the scooter? Do the city of Columbus owns it? Or is it being outsourced to a third-party company? And how many companies are out there?
So there's two companies. They are private companies. We have a contract with them, the city does. But they are independent companies.
Okay, so why can't we find if the scooters can't be in a designated area? Is that something we can look into, or?
Yeah, could you just repeat the question?
So, sorry. Can the scooters that are not parked in a designated area, can they be fined? Wouldn't that kind of fix the problem itself? If I was riding, I wouldn't want to be fined for that, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, enforcement and finding onto user is something we, I, Iuded to earlier. It's something we are exploring. And they, the, this, the companies themselves do have to report their level of finding onto, onto riders. And that, that is a labor-intensive task that we've asked of them. But we know, we need to know what's going on as a city, the owner of the contract. So something we're still exploring and continuing to work, to work through, to, to get more information.
So I don't understand what you mean, it's labor-intensive. Why is it hard to find a person?
Are you saying a person to enforce this?
No, I mean, like, if the scooter is being left in the designated area, if the city reports it, can they, like, be able to identify the person who last broke the scooter? And do you find for it?
So yes. And, and one thing, I mean, you know, the, the, the image that I had up there representing the, the heat map of the parking events, we, we're getting thousands of these a day. And I think that the AI technology is going to help with the enforcement onto users. Because if you park a scooter in one location, five minutes later, it'll be ridden by another person. It's just, it is candidly difficult to sometimes track exactly. And then going through thousands of photos, we're thinking, the companies themselves think that the AI is gonna help reduce some of the, the human power behind that. So this, this is something we're asking of them. And, and we're hoping that they can, they can turn out some sort of product for us.
Oh, okay. But if the person damaged the scooter, they have a way of knowing who last wrote it, right?
Yes, they do.
Okay. And then my next question is, can the user take a picture of the scooter before, like, like, once it's parked? Can they themselves take a picture of it? Would that, like, encourage them to park it in the right spot, rather than just throw the scooter and then walk away?
So you do need to take a picture to end your ride. And with, let's say, for example, you park directly on an ADA curb ramp. If that wasn't manually audited, the AI aspect of that should be able to flag and then retroactively from that picture, I hope I'm describing this as well as I can, levy a fine onto the user. So I don't have a perfect answer for you right now. But it, it, all the things that you're talking about is a work in progress. And we're, we're being very adamant about this right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Justin, this is Brian, work alongside Christian. The service level agreements that we went over in the first part, where we had pass and fail for some of those, we are issuing fines to the vendors themselves. So we're holding the vendors themselves accountable. It's not that if the vendors of the shared mobility devices are just allowing devices to be parked inadequately, we're not just saying, that's okay. We are issuing fines to both Vio and Spin if they are failing in their service level agreement. Thank you. Sir, did you have a question?
My name's Mr. My name's Mr. Lathan George Wilkins, I'm a resident. Lathan George Wilkins, resident of North Linden. You showed the first slide again. Could you pop that back up for me, please? The scooters, I'm all favor of this, but there needs to be some type of diagram, how to use this for all people. The next slide that you have here, the crosswalk for pedestrians that's in wheelchairs, blind, visually impaired, those need to be set back off the sidewalk so people can walk down, go into the destination. The other slide you have there, I'm all in favor of that, to have that draped in concrete with some type of information that shows how to use this and how to end this ride. The dotted slide that you have, seem like it's all in the High Street University, Buddles and High, Arcadian High. The city is constantly growing with zoning, with apartments and things all around Columbus. I'd like to see this more expanded all over the state of Ohio. Also, given the linked time to use this, maybe 3.5 miles as the destined time for this. I don't know how this is being used, if it's by a phone, app, whatever it may be. But I do see this all around town. I'll, I'll be interested, taking one of this, but I don't know how this system works at all. The next slide that you have here, the, this needs to be put in a, a, some type of concrete device with having some type of credit card, digital device with a phone or either cash. Some people don't have phone technology where some, where somebody can use this, like myself. I do travel around town, do Dakota services and things and stuff like this. If this can be more accessibility to everybody. Visually impaired population, I would like to see more, some, that's more technology. You know, if I'm riding, if I want to take my wife where she can sit down or something, I'd like to see more of that, you know? People are traveling by bus or vehicle, whatever the main sources may be for those people. So I'd like to see more of this around town. And thank you for your time.
So not a question, but a comment online from Chad Rittenhour as an FYI for reference. And it lists out a use case today for a scooter that was parked at the corner of Hubbard and Highland Street. And at this time, there, and there's, you know, pictures and evidence on the chat. And at this time, there are no other questions on the chat.
Okay. Thank you very much. Again, my name is Brian Ashworth from the Department of Public Service. I work alongside Christian. Appreciate all of your feedback so far on the shared mobility device program. And I'm looking forward to have a bit of a conversation today about sidewalks. In the city of Columbus, approximately 53% of our city has sidewalks in varying degrees of condition. But we do have 53% of our city with sidewalk connectivity. Ideally, 100% of our city would have pedestrian connection. In some cases, some communities don't necessarily want that sidewalk through their front yard or through their property. So that is one of the pieces that we consistently work through in older neighborhoods when design standards were not the same to include sidewalks everywhere. It can be difficult, expensive, or even prohibitive to go back and retroactively add sidewalks. That's why in most cases, as you can see on the two pictures that I have on the screen here today, we have focused our work in adding pedestrian connectivity on arterials or major roadways. If and when we go back and do resurfacings or have utility work, that is when we try and add those sidewalks or shared-use path connections. So an example, on the left is Sinclair Avenue, which just recently got a shared-use path. And then Morse Road, trying to be able to have pedestrian connectivity wherever possible. We're really proud about the effort of Linkus as well through Coda. So thank you to the person that's on from Coda today. But Linkus will provide almost $60 million a year in perpetuity for sidewalks, bike paths, and trails. So this is one funding source that we, not only the city of Columbus, it's for all of the Franklin County region, or really the Coda service area. But that, those Linkus transit supportive infrastructure dollars will be able to help invest into our pedestrian network. Thank you to the next one. Thank you very much. We know that not everyone is able to afford a car, use a car, have access to a car. We know that these conditions, like you see on Hall Road, are not uncommon. And we are working to address those in every way that we can. Hall Road, the two images that you see there are one of our transit supportive infrastructure projects. It connects several different multifamily neighborhoods to grocery stores and over an interstate. But the interstate has become a massive barrier between the two. And the current condition does not have sidewalk access on it. So it becomes not only unsafe, but uncomfortable and a pretty treacherous trip for anyone, whether you are going 15 miles an hour on a bike or you're having to push your significant other up the ramp on a wheelchair. It is not safe or fun for everyone. We were awarded this, earlier this year, a $1.65 million grant from the federal government to be able to conduct a vulnerable road user safety plan. This work will include a more in-depth look at our sidewalks and how and where we can fill sidewalk gaps. So we currently have a 3-1-1 system. I think even that's some of what spawned today's conversation with Johnstown Road. We get several of them daily. And we try to work through where and how we can fill those gaps. This plan will help us prioritize those so that we can work alongside our infrastructure departments and others to be able to start filling those for our most vulnerable road users. So we are working on that request for approvals now on that vulnerable road user safety plan. I see people reaching for mics, so I'm gonna pause for a second for questions.
All right, so what you mean by the, you mentioned sidewalks in the neighborhood. And, hi, my name is Justin Simmons. Sorry about that. You mentioned that some neighborhoods don't let you have sidewalks? How's that work? And I thought there was a, there was a word. And then domain, or don't the government have the right access building sidewalks regardless? How's that work?
This is Brian again. Eminent domain would be a last resort in terms of taking people's property in term, to be able to do that. That is not necessarily one of the city's favorite ways to be able to conduct those types of projects. In most older neighborhoods, the right-of-way or the area that the city owns for the roadway itself doesn't go back far enough into a property for us to provide space for a sidewalk and proper drainage to be able to do that. So we would either need to purchase back into a person's property. So let's say you own the home and we wanted to build a sidewalk up against your property between your house and the street. We would need to purchase right away from you to be able to build the sidewalk in that area. As you can imagine, if you're trying to build a sidewalk along a mile stretch and you're trying to then purchase right away from every single property, that simple, quote-unquote, "simple" sidewalk, that's only five feet of concrete, ends up costing millions and millions of dollars to be able to, to be able to do. So we have tried to use our few dollars sparingly in trying to make connections where there are gaps in sidewalks, where we do have right-of-way, and have not necessarily focused as much yet on areas where we know that there are significant right-of-way purchases that need to be made, where the, where that, that will just eat up a, a majority of our budget to be able to make those connections.
All right, that makes sense. Justin Simmons again, sorry. Can you give an example, what neighborhood would that be in? Because I'm like trying to picture where that would be, and nothing's come to mind.
This is Brian. I will not be forced to call out any specific neighborhood.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. It's more of a condition of when neighborhoods were built, more than the geography themselves. Typically, some of your, like, 1980s to almost 2000s or maybe 1960s neighborhoods were built when the city was expanding pretty rapidly and becoming a little bit more suburban. And in areas where you might have cul-de-sacs. And in areas where you might have cul-de-sacs or others where you have pretty low-stress streets, it wasn't as imperative for those developments to include sidewalks because people would just use the low-stress streets themselves to be able to walk back and forth or bike. So there weren't as many, there weren't as many sidewalks built in those type of neighborhoods. All right, thank you.
I have a quick question. This is Janaya Miller, Commissioner. So if someone thinks that their neighborhood shouldn't have a sidewalk, will we send a request for a 3-1-1 for that?
Yes ma'am, you would. There's also some pretty great ways that you can reach out through your council member liaison or your area commission, if you live in an area with an area commission, to be able to prop those types of project ideas up so that we can gain, we can get additional funding to be able to do those.
Understood. Thank you so much.
And this is Tricia Kovacs again. I know I was one of the ones that brought up that I heard Johnstown Road was getting a side path, but when I asked Franklin County Engineering, they said it's a little bit off. But he mentioned that we should create 3-1, or well, get in touch with Columbus about just the section between, can't get the word right, Stelter and Franklin County Development Disability Location. So I just hope that's considered a priority, that it's a sidewalk that's needed for a location for people with disabilities need to be able to travel. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Tricia. Yes ma'am.
This is Belinda. Brian, your conversations are hitting on all the bright points. And I want to help your department understand a little bit more about our perspective. ADA was passed in 1992 and 90, and then everything was supposed to be ready in 1993. We actually do also, as a committee, have a pack, a plan that the city passed in 92. Just to be fair to you, that got warehoused when we had changed mayor. So now we're, we have a new commission. It's a pride of you all, of all direct representatives of disability community. It's a lot different than the past 30 years of professional base. So our perspective is, is that we really, and I'm speaking for the disability advocate, it's different than the commissioner. We have an expectation that this should have all been done by now. So when we're talking about, there's not money, I want to be fair to you, you've already received the money. You just used it for other projects. And so to now look at us as if we're waiting for money again is, is not only unfair, it's just not true. You need to reassess your priorities. ADA compliant is what we expect. It is what the city agreed to. And when we have the city departments for now coming to us, we have that expectation of how the city's going to plan for now. You already have the budget. We get an extra, we get an equal piece of that pie. So how are we going to be included in those department plans for that piece of the pie? If the department has concerns about needing more, it's also offensive to us because we're not extra added on. We're, we're a piece of the pie. If you need to increase your budget for the overall, I'm just trying to explain this so we all get it. If you need to increase your budget overall to, you know, so everybody gets an equal piece of that pie, great. We're by that. But to say you're waiting for more budget for changing over to these sidewalks, it's blatantly unfair to us. We would like for us to be included and not as an after effect. And it's very hurtful, just to be clear. And I'm the advocate here. When we talk about Johnstown, and I wish Christine was on the line, but Christine and I were at a meeting at Franklin County Board of Development of Disabilities last summer. And it was very clear to me that DD was having to pay a lot of extra money for people to get individual rights to them, to pick them up and leave. And you know, DD building isn't that far off Stelter Road. I walked in the street and part of it to get to their building because the CODA bus stop is right on Stelter around the corner, in front of Sheets. That is an organization that serves people with developmental disabilities. There is another ADA problem. If I have to explain that, that, that looks intentional because our institutions are important to us. We expect to be served equally like everybody else. So when Commissioner Tricia checked on the budget, which I'm so grateful for, that should have set up a flag for everybody. Oh my God, we made a mistake there, you know, and we need to move ahead. And explain the 3-1-1 process that you touched on. That's who I sent it to. I was in city council meetings. City council members were saying, please send these requests for sidewalks to 3-1-1. I even put it in my notice and they bounced it back to me, "Thank you for your suggestion." I had to send our then ADA coordinator, Mr. Jones, to defend us on that, and we had to send more additional documentation. What I'm getting to next is you don't have a process that works. Whenever these issues are brought up, it should be like a one-touch system, okay? Here it is, it's going to go out through whatever department, and it's going to be a constant flag until it's completely solved. And here we are a year later, talking about Johnstown and Franklin, Franklin County Board of Developmental Disabilities. I want to impose upon you a new way of thinking about this, that all departments should be thinking about how to serve. The expectations are always there. We would like for you to have a different reference point about us and our needs. I also want to, I want to touch on this now because I know you're going to the complete streets policy. This picture definitely shows that this does not have an accessible pedestrian signal. And we've noted, and Commissioner Tricia's been documenting this for about a decade, we've been watching the city remove those. We were told by your last representative who was here that you have priorities, I think is the term he used, for funding that it slows traffic down because we need accessible pedestrian signals. I can't tell you how purple that is to me, the people that I represent, people who are blind and low vision. We need those accessible pedestrian signals, and Karina's online, she's already heard me talk about you needing to do that because we're putting together a coordinated plan where CODA's bus stops will all have accessible pedestrian signals. And you two should be working in coordination with that. We're, I'm not the first one to say it, but it seems like we keep needing to bring it up. And I think, again, that looks at, that we're not a priority. Please make this a priority. Please include it in everything. Please make this an equal pie to the budget. Please just come to us in a different way. Okay?
Thank you, Belinda.
Thank you.
Just a quick note. This is Nicole, a woman. Belinda, what I'm hearing real quick is that Johnstown is very important, and I don't know if that can become a priority because I don't want to get away from and do all two. I want us to have, him to have one objective. So am I hearing collectively that Johnstown is the priority? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, it's been an issue for a while.
So true, okay. Okay, and Belinda, that's something that, that's concerning you because of the DD, right?
Right, the Secret Service and that agency also requested a 3-1-2.
Okay, so if we could take that back, because I know that we have a lot of priorities, but let's make that number one if possible. Okay, this is Nicole, and then we're gonna pause, and I want to let you finish because you have some more, right?
Just one more, yeah?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Brian. Belinda, before you walk away, I just want to say thank you for all your comments. I am not trying to push any advocates or user groups away, and I am also trying to work as hard as I can so that all of our facilities are for all ages, abilities, and user groups. So I, I just want to know, I just want you to know that I hear you, and I am trying to work to accommodate that. I hope that what I presented earlier and shared earlier is not to demean your user groups and saying that we only have a little bit of money and we'll do what we can. That is, I, I hope that I didn't portray that message. It is just that we all work within a restrained amount of money. I'm not saying that that's too little or not enough. I'm just saying there is a set amount of money, and we are, we do the best of our ability to try and use that to accommodate as many users as we can. So I just, I want to say thank you for your comments, and I was definitely taking notes throughout. I was not ignoring you when I was looking down, so thank you.
I watch you, Brian. I thank you. This is Belinda. It, it's just that even when we brought things up, Madam Chair, over the years here, we just don't make it on to any list. Just that Zane had to go back and defend us with 3-1-1, and he was ADA coordinator. This is telling you how difficult this is for us, and we just want a different orientation. I am very cognizant, I work on education as well. I'm very cognizant that universities and colleges aren't teaching our graduates ADA. We're not even teaching teachers how to teach students with disabilities. It's a whole cultural shift, and I discuss it with the staff here regularly. It's that now we're going to have to model to you what good service delivery is, starting with Madam Chair putting in what's priority and keeping a long list, and everybody gets a piece of that pie, you know? And I would like to hear you talk to council, everybody needs a piece of that pie. It's not extra, and these aren't different or more people. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Belinda. And this is Nicole, real quick, because I do want to move forward in the agenda. I want to say that I, you did acknowledge millions of dollars to change someone's property. So I don't want you to walk away from this meeting thinking about that part. But I do want to suggest that the importance of the commission is Johnstown, considering that there is an ADA building on that street on both, you know, for both sides. So that's, so I don't want you to walk away saying, "I didn't tell them anything." No, that's not bad. Okay, so I do want to move forward in the agenda.
Can I make one comment?
Make it brief.
Just very brief.
Okay, turn your mic on, sweetheart.
No, we're not.
Yeah, I need to hear you. Come on, sweetheart.
I was silent for touching. Okay. Just one brief comment. As you all in the city, look at city design, I'm sure you've heard the term "universal design", and it's, it doesn't just cover websites and things, it's, it's everything. Accessibility should be first. As Belinda said, not an afterthought. I just want to make sure that you are hearing that term, "universal design". It's not just online, it's structural too.
Yes, we appreciate Janaya, that's our vice chair, so I know that she definitely has a voice. So as we, as Johnstown boots. I gotta buy him by the material. Please get Johnstown today. Okay. We're gonna move forward with city council for, and that is the session.
While we're swapping, we have
Go ahead.
We have one question.
Oh, one question, one question.
And we'll just get a brief, maybe a brief response in the, in order to keep up the time. So this question's for Christian. Can you provide any insight into the Department of Public Services' consideration on empowering their own parking enforcement officers to write a ticket for scooters blocking ADA ramps? Just real, I've been talking very fast. I apologize. Just like they would for personal vehicles. It would seem that this could be an easy lift for these city staff members that are already regularly patrolling many popular scooter user areas like the short north and permit parking. If I could just ask that your response is brief. Thank you.
Sure, so that, that's something that we have discussed. There, there are a few, a handful of obstacles as it relates to just parking enforcement and the higher revised code in terms of how things are registered. A car is registered through the BMV, scooters not necessarily are. So there are some complications with that model. It's not something, we, we are exploring that. But that's, there are a lot of, I think, barriers for that model. But since we are mobility and parking, that all of those folks are in our division. So in terms of making it work logistically from like a department standpoint, there are some eases there. But it's just how cars are governed versus shared mobility devices and bikes and things of that nature, they're distinctly different. So there, there are challenges, but we are looking to explore it.
Thank you for that. As we move forward in the agenda, I would like to, this is Nicole. I would like to ask if we can have another brief in the next two months, so we can, if you guys can come back possibly to give us an idea of what they said about Johnstown. We're going, Johnstown, Johnstown, Johnstown. Okay.
It will not, it will not be built in two months, I can
No, not built. No, no, no. I, I'm, I'm, yes, definitely not built. I, I don't anticipate that. But that the discussion was had, so this committee will know that you went back and had a discussion on how this is a priority for us. That's, that's just the one thing. So September, October, come back in October and just, hey, you talk to, you know, so that everybody can have a more fussed, okay?
All right, we thank you for having us. Appreciate the time.
Well, we appreciate the, the, all the information, appreciate the slides, appreciate the efforts that you are making to make this a priority, appreciate the fact that the timing that you guys told him was 90 minutes, where you gave him an hour. So there is some, you know, that you guys are really trying to make this a priority, so that is appreciated. So we're grateful for your, for your report. Next up, I would like to go to city council and this session.
Hello, this is Skylar with Columbus City Council. So I just have a couple of updates on how we are working to improve user experience with attending council meetings and civic engagement. So my supervisor, Chelsea, and I, we met with Angie, our ADA coordinator, and city hall security to get the elevator unlocked for longer hours on Monday nights, so it's easier to attend council meetings. And also talking to security to get them trained to direct people there and not only the stairs. We just asked that people be patient. I think we've heard in the past that some people thought that the elevator is broken, but it just takes a long time at the end of the day when a lot of people are leaving at the same time. But I guess we've heard that before, when people feel that the elevator might be broken. We're also working with facilities to increase accessibility with attending council meetings with directional signage and getting people to the elevator so they don't get lost. Sometimes we have a staff person at the bottom of the stairs to help direct people, but we're looking for feedback on how it would be most helpful to get people where they need to go. And then we're meeting with the appropriate city staff for adding reserved seating to chambers and improving handicap parking at city hall.
Madam Chair.
Thank you for that report. Belinda, two minutes, sweetheart, come on. Because I want you to be able to talk. Go ahead, Belinda.
Thank you so much for coming and doing the city council report. This is really important to Nate, Sarah, and I. We have been discussing continuously for the last several months with Angie about the accommodations in city council meetings. We definitely want the rail. We want those reserved seats when our members go into city council meetings and those seats are filled in front of the accessible TV that we set up, that Mark went out of his way to fix. It, it's very, it makes us not be successful. And we had a demonstration in the last city council meeting of how, how that harmed us. I think would be very helpful, and this was a suggestion from another legislative aide, that you have a checkoff list for council meetings. Every meeting, somebody's got to be responsible, check all those things are done. I think that would be a helpful tool for you, if I could be so forward. And we would like for you to report back, see how things are going.
Could you, and this could also be an email thing, I know we're crunched for time here, but like a list of things that you guys need for council meetings, right? Like there's reserved seats, I understand that there's also large print agendas. What are some of the other things?
Well, the elevator is, is, a couple of times it's been shut down. It's not that it's slow, it's actually shut down. And then when this, visitors go to security, security's the ones telling them to use the stairs. They need training, you know, there's, so there's a whole series of things. And I will get with Angie when she comes back, and I will also speak with Zane because he's very experienced in this, and we will work together on a list. And Madam Chair, I will make sure that you have a copy of that.
I was gonna ask.
Yeah.
I love that on the internal.
Yeah.
But I would like leadership, hold on. This is Nicole speaking. I want leadership to see, before we just give everything to council, that leadership sees, so we can talk about it, and then we can give it to council so it's not so many different directions that they have a set idea on what it is that we would prioritize.
Absolutely. Zane, you and I will work on that, if that's okay.
But we appreciate you, Belinda. You are leader. But we appreciate you, Belinda, you are leader.
You are, you are. Can I just add just one thing so that the young lady can hear? Also, um, one other major thing. I, I, I know that if I don't get it that often, but you may have people that come in and may need to use, oh, I can't even think of the word, I'm drawing a blank. Like if you, if you want to be able to hear, because the sound in, in city council hall, the ear of the, um,
An assistive listening device.
Thank you. I was so drawing a blank. But when I was there, it's, it's so in my mind outdated that I had to take off my hearing aid and my earring just to put this thing around my ear to even hear what's happening in the council meeting when I was there, um, back in June for the appointment of my position on the commission. And I'm glad we have that, but if there, if there's any effort can be made to make sure that that assistive listening device is kind of up to date.
We will, Janaye, this is Nicole, sweetheart. What we're gonna do is we're gonna put together a comprehensive list so that we can send to council so you'll have an idea. So I just wanna, um, I wanna move the agenda forward. Um, I appreciate that. Before you speak, sir, I want, let me move the agenda forward and then we'll come to you. Um, because I don't want us to get away from, because right now we talked all the way to 3:03. So we still got 20,000 things on the agenda. So, um, I want to, um, so what we're going to do, um, thank you so much for, uh, giving us city councils' information and the try, and the, and the things that you're trying to do and things that you're aware of and reporting to us. I appreciate that. Um, I would like to ask as, uh, the commissioners, if we could table voting for the bylaws? Um, and we can do that possibly next month. Um, if you guys can agree with me to table that, um, or if you think that that might not be, did everybody get a chance to read them? But well, I'm gonna ask that, can we table? So who are okay with that? Okay, Janaye, you said you're okay with that?
I would also, because I don't know if we got this in email ahead of time and I'd like to compare it with the old one to see what's changed.
I think this is the old one, dear.
Oh.
Uh-huh, I believe so, because it says 2010.
It's 13, I thought.
2013, okay.
The old one, it hasn't been updated.
October 2013.
That we do need to update it because there's some things are wrong in it.
Okay, so table it is, okay, so let's table. Um, so did I get two votes in there, or, uh, Janaye?
Yeah.
Okay, Trish, you second it?
I second it.
Okay, so we're tabling the bylaws? Um, and, uh, can we also table, because of time sake, review for June? In July, or can we, or you want to do June and we table July? I'm just asking you guys because I am looking at the time and there's some things that, other things that we need to discuss.
If I could interject, you know, if, if you've had a chance to review the June, July, and if you have any concerns, we can address. So if not, you can probably cover that the next meeting, that's my suggestion.
I, I agree with that suggestion. This is Nicole. Janaye said if there's anything that you guys have concerns about for the June and July meetings, um, meet, meet, meeting minutes, um, then we can talk about that. Uh, but as far as the reading of the minutes, let's table that. So does anyone have any concerns online? I don't want to forget about you.
No, but I can provide, uh, the ADA coordinator update if you are.
Yes, please.
Please.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's, it's, yeah, thank you, Zane.
This is Zane Jones. Um, I was previously the ADA coordinator, uh, but now, uh, the wonderful Angie Wise is, and she is currently attending the ADA Trainer Trainer Leadership Network in Chicago. And she is very sad to miss this meeting, that's what her notes say, she's very sad. No, I think she is online, so she's maybe less sad than she was. So there has been a discussion regarding, uh, braille, and so I haven't updated on braille as of the last week. Uh, so we've initiated a process with a vendor to provide braille agendas for this meeting or any meeting, um, that the, the city conducts. Once they're a vendor with the city, uh, different departments can access them. I'm not gonna name the, uh, vendor at this time, uh, but they have been somewhat, um, reluctant to go through the process that's required to become a vendor with the city. Uh, so there's certain requirements that you need to do to be a vendor with the city. Uh, we were talking with them as early as this morning, uh, to continue to move the process forward. I think we're probably gonna explore, uh, alternate vendors in order to satisfy that requirement. So the braille is initiated, but still in process. And I have a note here that says, "Say this with emphasis," so I will say this. "Exciting news. Received approval to upload the CACTD meetings on the City of Columbus YouTube page. The recording of the July meeting has been uploaded and I was reminded to take a picture of all of you, which I've already done." And then the two key follow-ups from, uh, the July meeting were, uh, to hear from the Department of Public Service and from city council, which we have satisfied. And then I know there has been a prior conversation with the leadership regarding, uh, the ability to get headshots, uh, and update the city website. And, uh, I have asked CTV to attend the next meeting. And so I feel good about that one. That is the, that is the update for this time.
Well, she's right, we are excited about that update. Um, we did discuss as a leadership to, um, so that the city, I mean, I'm hoping that all the commissioners are okay with this. I'm getting you guys on the spot during this meeting. But, um, for the City of Columbus's website to have our pictures, um, and our positions so that, um, when people look at us or Google or anything about this commission, that it is on the city site. So people don't think we're just making up our positions or making up the fact that we're commissioners. Um, so thank you for, um, for that. Um, we would love to have headshots and, uh, a brief, maybe one or two sentence bio of who you are and your, or your passion or something like that. So I'm, I'm gonna pause that because Zane said anything already. Um, and we're gonna, Janaye, you look like you're about to push the button.
No.
Okay. I'm sorry if that's, I'm sorry interpreter, thank you. I, yeah. Um, the next, uh, is community issues and announcements. Um, we are going to, um, go to that and I would, are you coming to the mic, sir, just to talk about that?
I do want to speak about, uh, this lady, um, as far as, um, city council.
If we could have you speak into the microphone, uh, a little bit more.
My name's Mr. William George Wilkins, I'm a resident of North London. Um, I want to speak about city council and accessibility. Um, I've been going to city council for the last 25 years and I think the biggest problem is the large print and also braille copies. This is my wife in the audience. And so what I usually do is go to city council and they have me a DVD to follow on Monday so my wife and I can catch up. Um, I do, the one biggest, uh, answer is to this, is the lighting and, and audio and that people sit back in those chairs back there, there's not enough lighting. There's only, uh, one TV. They use, there's got to be a TV that's right there behind the audio so they can see what's going on. Sometime, there's not enough where people can hear the city council members or speaking. They're not speaking loud enough to know what's going on. Um, the other answer is to all this is when somebody attends city council, it's gotta be wheelchair accessibility. They have the, uh, the doors that go around. There's a door that somebody can press, but sometime it's not even open for automated wheelchair to get through. The other things is I do want to say thank you for what you guys are doing, but I, I, I do want to hear the titles, the decision, what y'all serve on up here. How long is y'all turn, what, and, you know, that's why, because this is my wife's first time coming to this meeting. And so, you know, I just want to say commendation for all you guys do. I want to piggyback on this young lady. The question that I want to ask about is Johnstown. How long has this been neglected with ADA accessibility in this particular area? How long this has been on the docket and how long this is not forward steamed ahead with this, with constantly the city that's constantly grown? We have to have that as the first priority. Let me say that again, our first priority, because when we have multi-disability out here in different businesses that's not accessibility to wheelchairs and things and stuff like that, that needs to be looked at because the city is really moving ahead at, at a rapid pace out here. Because I think in zone N, you'll see all these, um, these heartments that's going up. And so, you know, I, and I, and I do want to thank you because like I said, that really touched me. It's so close because I didn't know how long this has been on the docket. You know, I think it has been for seven years. So again, my hat goes off to you for what you're trying to do. This is gonna be a long task to do, but I confident in all of y'all that y'all have the capability. Because like I say, I've been a, uh, a passenger for Coda for over 51 years and I see a lot of challenges out here with these wheelchairs where some of the Coda drivers have to get off and push the wheelchair in a glass here to get on a black pavement because there's no sidewalk out there. Uh, I do want to say this in closing. There has been a couple, uh, fatality accidents, one on, uh, West Road Innis and one out there on Island Creek where a young man had died, leaving his job. And so if we can do more by looking at these accessibility, these bus stops, and I want to tell us all of y'all to do that. And thank you for your time again. My name's Mr. Wilkins.
Thank you, so this is Nicole. Thank you so much, Mr. Wilkins. Trish, I guess, uh, Commissioner Trish, you are the one who has been here to answer this question.
Well, I don't know how long the issue of the, um, development of disabilities thing has been on the radar, but I know we've been asking for pedestrian accessibility on Johnstown, the whole thing from Cassidy all the way to Gayhannah for years. And I, I live in Gayhannah, so we've been asking Gayhannah to do the same. But, um, when Christie brought up the, um, problem of, um, the disability, um, DD building, I was like, yeah, we just built that, she's not too long ago, so there's a sidewalk open. It's only at the sheets and it doesn't go to the disability office. So like I, like I told the books from service, I hope that, you know, one of the highest priorities is these kind of locations that need, uh, accessibility for people with disabilities.
I would say just one thing. I want to play my part in a role with this today as I leave this, as I leave this building today. My name's Mr. Wilkins, I'm a resident of North London area. You have my full commitment and I'll take my wife and we'll go look at that area today because she's all the way blind. And I'll call city coun, I will call three more more to make several complaints because this is gonna be done. Because they know me personally and I don't play. You know, because like I said, when it comes to this, we want people to be safe. And so you've got my full commitment on this and I will say thank you for your time.
Can I bring up one more thing that I was hoping to bring up when these folks were here? Um, we used to have a transportation, transportation and pedestrian commission. It's still on the books on the city ordinances, but it hasn't met, as far as I can tell, since 2012 and 13. I used to be on the bicycle subcommittee for the red bikes. But I like to go to the other ones because we can bring up things for people with disabilities, like somebody needed a crosswalk because she had trouble walking. And I wish that commission would begin to meet again. Uh, it used to meet, I think, monthly and you could see the agenda. And one of the things we would do is if we knew that a street was being resurfaced, we'd say, hey, that one needs a sidewalk. You know, as long as you're doing the work on the street, do the extra mile. Um, so I, I've asked for this a long time. I know the bike plus people are talking about reinstating that commission because we talk about transportation a lot here, but I think it's really that commission's responsibility and then we're gonna have to waste all our time here doing that. So that's my, uh, soapbox thing.
This is Nicole, thank you for that. Um, we are at 3:15, um, so I do want to, uh, we have 10 minutes. Um, so I want to begin to, um, deal with any other, but first of all, thank you for letting us know, making us aware of, um, of that, of Commissioner, uh, Tricia. Um, okay, well, uh, is Belinda, uh, you're ready? Um, I sure pretty tired.
Yes, ma'am, I'll make it brief.
Okay.
I want to thank the administration for working on the braille. Janaye and I and Sarah are grateful to you. Thank you so much for moving forward on that. This is very important. We want our commissioners to have their accommodations. We want our visitors to council have accommodations and we want our North London commissioners to have their accommodations. Thank you. I wanted to, I, I started briefly before, I spoke before Coda on, in July. I was received well about the accessibility they have to finish making the whole entire administration accessible. I'm gonna be meeting with the chairman soon, so I keep making notes of all your, your concerns about that and they will be brought up with the chairman. Um, the plan, Drew and Commissioner Janaye are working on making accessible the ADA plan. Um, Commissioner Tricia brought us the front part of the plan, so we've put those together. I did have to file a, uh, public records request because the front part of the plan described parts of the appendix that are missing. So I'm asking for those missing pieces. I don't know how long, it took nearly 90 days for the first public record, but I'll keep you updated. Um, I also want to say one last thing that I'm heartbroken about. Columbus City Schools drop, graduation rate dropped to sub from 86 to 70%. We really know who those students are and we still do have teachers who are trained to teach students with disabilities and that is the first domino in our community. I want us all to be mindful of that. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Belinda. This is Nicole, um, thank you for bringing that up. Zane, are there anyone online that, do they have any, uh, things that they would like to add to, uh, the community issues?
This is Zane, one moment.
And our audience, is there anyone in our audience that has anything? Oh, go ahead, Bob.
We have no questions on the chat.
Okay, thank you, Zane.
So I plan to attend the SB Adaptive Sports Complex dedication ceremony next week. And I've been in extensive communication with them about the fact that it's almost impossible to travel there except by car or by paratransit. To go off the number 10 bus in Broad Street, it's a tedious walk on sloped grassy surfaces and there's a wire across the entrance to the park. Anyway, I'll stop, but I've been dealing with that for about a week now.
This is Nicole, I am familiar with that. Um, they're doing a grand opening, um, of the building, but there needs to be a grand opening to the building. So I completely understand what you're saying, Bob. Uh, I appreciate you bringing that up. And that's something that we probably do need to say to them, um, as an FYI, especially since, um, I DJed the wheelchair basketball there for five to six years. So I know exactly what you're talking about. Appreciate that. Um, are there any other, uh, anybody else? Go ahead, Trish.
Sorry to take up so much time, but
Don't worry, no, you, this is why we do this.
But I know, like, we only have an hour and a half here once a month and there's a lot of things we wanted to work on. I had sent Angie a list of things. It's kind of frustrating when we, you know, we don't get much accomplished. So I thought if we could, like, set up a few subcommittees of people that work outside who email on certain things like updating our bylaws because there's some problems with it. I'm going through the transition plan and maybe like picking out a few of those things that were supposed to be done, like evaluating certain city buildings, um, but have a group that kind of looks at that, um, comes up with some things we can do short term. Some of the other things I had suggested to Angie, and I'm not, I, I'm kind of confused about like, what are we allowed to do through email versus has to be done through this meeting? But I had suggested review the Columbus.com website for accessibility. We did that once before, but it was totally revamped since then. Do some walk audits, place that Bob was just talking about, how you get from the bus to the Franklin Court, um, uh, Brexit. Um, there was also something we saw recently that there's a new center that the city has to be about any traffic signals. Can we go there and review, well, how accessible traffic signals are and whether we like the timing and things like that? Anyway, I had a whole bunch of things and then I won't say them all today, but it'd be nice to have a few subcommittees on different topics. It'd take more time than just the time where I'm speaking, so.
Commissioner Trish, this is Nicole. Um, I think that that's a good idea, but before we do that, um, I would like for us to make sure that the city knows who we are as commissioners, make sure that the website is updated, make sure that, um, people can see when we come and show up that we have a voice and that we're not just going and there's, and if they Google, there's no proof that who we are. So let's get that taken care of and then we can work on the subcommittees and then, because in that way, that allows us to update the website saying that this commissioner has this particular, you know, committee that they sit on or those, those kind of priorities. It allows more of a fluid way of us, um, dealing with issues and certain things. So once we, um, decide, as far as, once we get ourselves on the website and then we decide, uh, decide amongst us what are the committees we want to be on to, we can update the website so people know exactly what our passion pieces are so that, um, so that we can take care of them that kind of way.
I agree, this is Janaye, um, I agree with Nicole on that.
I agree, this is Janay, um, I agree with Nicole on that, um, order of things.
All right, um, are we doing, uh, pictures today, when is that happening? Oh, I'm sorry, Justin Simmons, I'm so sorry.
Um, Justin, what we're doing is we're trying to, uh, work on that to, to our goal for the website to be updated by October, this is Nicole, by October. So that gives time and everything like that, time for Zane to find a best photographer to take my small position, so I can have the most glamorous picture, have all of us look the best, best lighting, all of that. We need all that, we need to look very, very excellent. So we're gonna take at least, uh, so by October's meeting, that should be updated, that's our goal. Okay, we are at three twenty-three, so I wanna leave the, um, door open again. Um, Bob, if you can, can you tell everyone where this, uh, celebration is gonna be? At Franklin Park, the date and the times, just so the commissioners and the committee and the people in this audience know about that?
Uh, this, this is Bob Reed. We got an email announcing that event, as far as I know.
Yeah, we, no, we did, but for the public, um, if we can let the public know, cause we want the celebration to be, um, if you have that. Yes, we did get an email, um, as commissioners from our great missed ADA coordinator, but Zane who's one of the busy job, is there somebody online?
I appreciate that, Angie is on the line.
Angie is on the line.
And so it'll be eleven o'clock, I have it ending time at one o'clock, which may not be true. The Franklin Park Adventure Center, seventeen fifty-five East Broad Street. The problem with giving that street address is it's a quarter mile walk on a grassy surface down a slope from that exact address on Broad Street to where the building really is. It's closer to a street called Franklin Park South. If you're in a wheelchair, there are wires stretched across the entrance to the park. You have to be able to get over those wires to come from the south. Oh, sorry. The date is Wednesday, September third.
Okay.
And what'd you say the time was again, Bob?
Eleven o'clock.
A M?
Yeah, and the very same building had been called something like the Franklin Park Adventure Center. So if you do a Google search for that, you may find it, and you may not find this, because the name of the building might change during the dedication.
Dedication, yeah, the Franklin Park Adventure Center, uh, this is Nicole, uh, is where you did a lot of wheelchair basketball games and things of that nature, and they did a lot of aquatic things. Um, okay, well, Janay, did you have something that you wanted to say, dear, or will you? Okay, all right, um, go ahead. Bob.
Hi. Hello, everybody, my name is Patrick Meeha from Department of Neighborhoods. Uh, I just have a couple of things that, I have a lot of experience managing a commission. I manage, I, I support the Community Relations Commission for the City of Columbus, which is the city's discrimination investigation, um, commission, for lack of a better word. And on a, on a sub note, I'd be happy to talk about that at some meeting in the future. Disability is a protected class, and we can investigate complaints in housing, employment, and public accommodation. What I, um, ask this, why I'm speaking right now is having, support this commission for the last eight years for the city, I have just a couple of notes, um, to share and hopefully keep the ball rolling for this commission. I think, first of all, starting a commission and getting the ball rolling with business and the flow is really tough, and I think you guys are, you all are doing a great job. So even though maybe some things aren't familiar about what does the meeting look and feel like, and Robert's Rules of Order, and, you know, it takes time and just keep, you know, keep working on it. And in, in that vein, uh, one note, I think subcommittees eventually, I agree that as they're representative to this, not a commissioner, is great. One note of caution is that those subcommittee meetings are also public meetings, and so have to be, um, noticed to the public and minutes taken and quorum met. So establishing those subcommittees is, and again, I'm not Josh Cartier, your lawyer, but so refer to him for the official diagnosis on that, but, um, happy to help when the time comes, you know, motioning to get those set up, making sure they're in the bylaws. Um, I also, just two things that I noticed from today's meeting, um, and I don't mean to step on leadership, but all the just observations, I think, and I think, and I talked to Angie about this, maybe this is in the pipeline already. All commissioners may be reviewing, and maybe even at the next meeting have a short lesson on Robert's Rules of Order to efficiently conduct business, so that everyone's on the same page. And that way, you know that officially you're gathering everybody's, all commissioners input. Um, is, it's just, you know, in my commission, find it very useful, especially when you're taking the minutes to be able to note this motion was taken, and that kinda gives you a record of the action that you might wanna take in the future and recording positions on things. And then, um, also just probably, and I know this is probably coming to the bylaws, but policies on when and how public comments are taken. Um, so that Commissioner, public comments, um, I think, for, for us and my commission, it's nice to have them, um, separate in, in the course of business, so that the positions that are recorded and the minutes are distinguished between Commissioner input and public comment input. Um, so these are just some things that I think can and will be helpful in the future. But like I said at the beginning, uh, I think this commission is off to a great start and very well supported by city staff, which I think is a great sign. I want you all to know that we're here to support you, and that I think that this is excellent work, that's all I ask.
Yeah, really quickly, this is Commissioner Janay, um, I wanna get your name again. I wanna thank you for your support and your suggestion. What's your name again?
Pedro Meeha from Department of Neighborhoods.
Okay, okay, thank you, Pedro, appreciate that, and I'm glad you mentioned Robert's Rules, cause it's one thing when you're on a, a board or maybe a not-for-profit versus something like this. So I, I didn't know Robert, the rules would apply here, but I'm, I'm saying that it does. So thank you for putting that out, appreciate it.
Uh, when I said subcommittee, maybe I meant working group. What I'm just saying is it takes time to wordsmith, like, you wanna change the bylaws? Maybe it's just be a working group, that, uh, it's a stupid, stupid idea, but. It's hard to do that in this meeting. Subcommittees, I guess, maybe are more important, so I'm, I'm familiar with the ones they have, for the TMPC, we have it. But I, I was just thinking, I don't know what you call it, but just during the month while we're not meeting, like going over, like, have people review our website, see if it's successful, you know, redo our bylaws, that kinda thing. And if lately, the group that meets for a couple of months gets the job done, and then it's done. That's what I'm trying to suggest.
That's called a ad hoc committee, or is it standing committee? I know that much.
This is Zane, I believe we have a question from the online group. All right, one moment, let me read it and then see if I can summarize it. Uh, not a question, but a comment. Would we also be able to have public comments submitted as written comment, as well as folks who come to the meetings? I believe the answer is, is yes, we can create a path for prior to the meetings if individuals have questions that they've like brought before the, uh, uh, commission, and, uh, we can create an avenue to have those submitted, probably have like a form on the website, you know, that would auto generate an email to Angie. We would just have to establish some sort of cutoff of book in prior to ensure that she has time to get an appropriate answer from the department.
This is Gray, yes, this is Gray Schultz, a commissioner who submitted that. I was just curious if folks could, um, i- if we would be able to, to read their comments, uh, as part of the public? Like, like you all said, maybe dedicating a portion of each meeting just to public comment and reading public comment and going over that, um, after we go through the issues on the agenda might be helpful to keep things organized, um, in the future, so.
All right, did any of you want present here? Okay, I'm getting headphones, good, thank you, Gray.
Okay, the timeout is three thirty-two. Um, we are, I'm so nervous, but can we officially adjourn?
We can, cause somebody has to make a motion to adjourn.
Can we make, I, can I make a motion to adjourn?
You can make, well, I think you're the chair.
I'm the chair.
So one of the other commissioners can make a motion? Yes, please.
I'll make the motion.
And someone needs to second it?
Trish.
This is Katrina Norris, and I second that.
Okay, everybody in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, uh, anybody opposed? All right, I think we're good.
Well, we wanna thank everybody for coming, have a good evening.
Thank you all, everyone online, have a wonderful day.